When we broke, we were on an amendment by Senator Tom Adda on the word cash. And I believe Senators Nicholas was the last one. Oh, Senator Tony Adda. Anyone else wish to speak on the Senator Tom Adda amendment? I see the hand of Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, you recognized.
I actually stand in opposition to taking the word cash out of the language. And I'm not sure if it is at this point that I can speak to how, to why. I want to keep the word cash there. It's because I believe that we're actually going to be limiting the extent to which the mayors can effectuate this, providing the free Wi-Fi to its constituents. But I think the concern that a lot of those who had opposed the word cash had to do with accountability and transparency. Whenever we talk about accepting cash, we want to make sure that we are accountable for every cent that is given to us, especially as public servants. So I wanted to keep the word cash, but I wanted to make a minor amendment that would just add that any cash donation or monetary donation will be subject to the rules and regulations that govern non-appropriated funds. And I think then, relative to that, the concerns that everyone had raised about the word cash, I think, given that I feel it's based on the need for accountability and transparency, that if we added just that small amendment, then we can then address everyone's concern.
Everybody understand the suggestion is to add cash subject to the rules and regulations of non-appropriated funds?
Yes, yes. Yes, there are rules and regulations because DOE has rules and regs pertaining to non-appropriated funds.
I believe Senator Uggins' question was whether or not there are rules and regulations for non-appropriated funds to the mayors and the mayor's council. It would seem to me that they're constantly receiving money for baseball teams, basketball teams, and uniforms, and fees, so maybe the chairman might be able to enlighten us as to how that's handled. The mayor's council.
Yes, they're subject to reporting requirements on the non-appropriated funds. But for all the, and even on procurement processes, they have to go through the bidding, you know, get three price quotes and all that, and look for the most, the best pricing for--
But specifically to non-appropriated funds, the mayor's council does have rules--
There are rules and regulations in place. They do go through the process, and they do go through the, to getting the at least three price quotes.
Yeah. I'm not talking about procurement--
Yes, even on non-appropriated funds.
Yeah, but just for the specific purpose of non-appropriated regulations. Did you wish to speak?
I just want to add is that BBMR was actually the ones that put the guidelines for non-appropriated funds, any amounts that are being collected that's not appropriated. But the thing is, is that there is a requirement of an annual audit as well, and I don't know that that's true for the mayors. But because this whole conversation is started anyway, I think it's, you know, whether the amendment, that's the question now, is whether the amendment then is, will be applicable then to, you know, the mayors. But I guess if it's a non-appropriated fund collection, then maybe it would, but either way, we're going to, I've already started to research that anyway and see what we need to do to make sure that the mayors are included as well, or anyone who collects cash.
I specifically asked the question of the chairman, and maybe I'll ask it again. As the oversight chair for the mayor's council, are the mayors required to comply with rules and regulations as it relates to non-appropriated funds?
And my answer is yes.
Yes.
Inclusive of reporting requirements. Mr. Chair, and the reason why is there has been a request from the mayors, particularly several mayors, to exempt themselves from the rules and regs. They want me to introduce legislation to that effect, and I'm saying, I think what's in place right now is-- So, yes, the short answer to your question, Vice, Mr. Speaker, is yes.
All right. So with the suggestion from Senator Underwood that we make the amendment to be cash subject to the rules and regulations--
Of non-appropriated funds.
Mr. Speaker, I think that Senator Adda's amendment is to strike the word cash. I think that we should dispose of that amendment first before we introduce that.
All right, fine, then. On the Senator Tom Adda amendment to strike the word cash, there's been an objection. All those in favor of the Adda amendment to strike the word cash, please indicate by raising your hand. Amendment fails. Senator--
[inaudible]
No, hold on a second. He still has the floor. And then there's others before you.
[inaudible]
Senator Tom, do you, you still have the floor on the--
I'll add.
All right. Thank you very much. On the main motion, I have Senator McCready, then Senator Juan Pat, then Senator Underwood.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in full support of this piece of legislation. Obviously, with the dialogue that we have from the body, it's a new piece of legislation, and I think if given the opportunity, it'd be a successful piece of legislation. I do know that when crafting this piece of legislation, the author, assumingly, I'm assuming that the author got input from the mayors and the mayor's council. In a year and a half or so, we're going to have an election, and there may be changes in some of the people that had stake in the language in this piece of legislation. So in the, in the risk of being redundant, I would like to go to page three and line 11. And the reason why I want to do this is because if there are changes to some of the people that had an input in this piece of legislation, then interpreting this law, if it becomes law, would be, I guess, the next paramount thing that we have to worry about. So in the process of interpreting this bill and the mandate, I would like to add, and in this case, I think redundancy is not a bad thing, where it says on line 10, "Each mayoral office is authorized to solicit and accept donations of cash." And from there, I would like to just add, "Internet equipment, comma, internet services, comma, and internet installation for the purpose of providing internet services." And this is redundant, but I think it's a good thing because now it's very specific in exactly what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think when you're interpreting the bill, if some of the people are not there that had an input and a say in constructing this bill, may be able to interpret it clear. And so I hope, I hope that, that's my amendment, Mr. Speaker.
[inaudible]
On the McCready amendment, who wishes to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm just, you know, I'm following along here with the proposed amendment from the retiring speaker. I just want to kind of read the whole section so we can, we can really understand what we're talking about here. The section reads, "Each mayoral office is authorized to solicit and accept donations of cash, equipment, and services for the purposes of providing internet services pursuant to this article." So I'm trying to really understand the nature of the amendment because it already is pretty distinct that the cash, the equipment, and the services must all be related to the purpose of providing internet service, services. So I understand the amendment was to have it read, "Internet equipment and internet installation," but all of that would still fall under the same premise of the existing language. So I guess maybe if I could request to see the amendment in writing so that I can understand how it would be different from what's originally, originally there. Mr. Speaker?
Two seconds.
Amendment that I would like to provide here that when the mayors then develop and post, and before they even post it, that they actually would send it to the AG's office to make sure that it covers, you know, everything, or that maybe there's a catch-all language that they can't use it for anything that's illegal, other than of course what we currently have here, because pornography is not included in this.
All right.
Legal counsel.
Do you have the language specific, or are you, are we voting on allowing counsel, legal counsel to put in a provision that says that before it's promulgated, it has to be approved by the Attorney General's Office?
That it will go to the AG's office, if it's not going through a AAA process, that it will go to the AG's office.
I'll take a short recess.
Yes, and thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, after discussing the matter with legal counsel, the chairman, and the author, is that this is what we decided to come up with, that if you can please look at 30305, where it says "The Mayor's Counsel" on line 18, this is that the Mayor's Counsel of Guam shall develop and post guidelines on, and this is the new language, on the acceptance and solicitations of donations, and then to, then continue to be uniformly applied to all mayoral offices and other designated public facilities, then delete such all the way to the end of 21. The new language is, "The Mayor's Counsel of Guam shall develop and post guidelines on the acceptance and solicitations of donations, to be uniformly applied to all mayoral offices and other designated public facilities," period.
On the Juan Pad amendment, any senator who wish to be heard? Senator Espaldom.
Just real briefly, just so that it reflects a consistency, it should be perhaps on the solicitation and acceptance, as opposed to acceptance and solicitation. Again, the very first words of 4305, mayor, it starts with authorize solicit and accept nation, so just to be consistent, I'm moving to just change those words around.
Any objection to the?
No objections.
Okay, on the Juan Pad amendment, any other senator, Senator Tom Addit?
And so if the author would yield, or the mover of the amendment would yield, would this guidelines being developed, is that going to be just to be reviewed within the Mayor's Counsel and approved by the Mayor's Counsel, or is that, would it be subject to some kind of a public hearing?
Currently, for this particular amendment, it's just at the council. I know in another, the Second Amendment that I'm going to proffer would be now the guidelines that would, you know, ensure what these services are, that will be considered appropriate for minors, in particular, concerned about that to follow the AAA process, but not, not this particular section.
Well, then, then going back then to my, if we had changed that word and said, "The Mayor's Counsel of Guam shall develop and post rules and regulations," then it automatically probably would be subjected to the AAA process. Rules and regulations are subjected to that. How, how is a guideline different from rules and regulations?
That guidelines is not the word that I came up with. Originally, what I had wanted to do was that if that particular section was not then to go through the AAA process, was just to have the AG actually provide some input, and maybe it might not be late actually even to do that, so that, I think that what we want to avoid is the long process that they were concerned about, that maybe working, the Mayor's Counsel maybe should work with the AG's office to develop and post, and that I think.
Yeah, I think that might be a reasonable compromise, is at least to have the AG's office, you know, review it and, and concur with it, short of going out and doing a full-blown AAA process.
Guidelines are on this other one also. Can we just take a short break? You're recognized.
So, Mr. Speaker, then, if I may, is that to add some words here to make sure that then, that it would actually go through the AG's office, so the Mayor's Counsel of Guam shall develop and post guidelines, subject to the approval of the AG. So that means, you know, on the solicitations and acceptance, they would come up with the guidelines, but, and then the AG will approve it. So then it doesn't go through that long process.
All right, there's one amendment from Speaker Wamp at the Mayor's Counsel. All right, there's one amendment from Speaker Wamp, "At the Mayor's Counsel of Guam shall develop and post guidelines, comma, on the, subject to the approval of the Attorney General, comma, on the acceptance, on the solicitation and acceptance of donations to be uniformly applied to all mayoral offices and other designated public facilities." Anyone wish to speak on the Juan Pad amendment, this first Juan Pad amendment? Is there an objection to the Juan Pad amendment? Is there an objection to the Juan Pad amendment? Hearing none. Madam Speaker, you have another amendment?
Yes, and the Second Amendment is on access control, and that's on page two. And on, when you come to line eighteen, at the end of facilities, to add these words, and it's underscored twice, so that's the new amendment, "Such guidelines shall be adopted," now, this is strictly now for the conditions and access of the internet services, shall be adopted and pursuant to the triple A process, and ensure that these internet services are appropriate for minors. That's the new language. And, and the reason for this too is that when DOE, remember, had purchased all of these computers to make, make our, have the internet services available for our schoolchildren, they provided some guidelines, and originally that was suggested by the, by our attorney, and, but then, in discussing it to make sure then that we really don't leave anything out, especially for minors, the adults, whatever is illegal is illegal, we see for them, but we want to set some guidelines and then, and to go through that process, where DOE and members in the community, parents and the mayors can all then make sure that these internet services and are provided, are appropriate for minors. So that's the Second Amendment.
We are all aware that by having two different standards, you may be able to solicit and have the internet services sitting there for months upon months until the trip to double, triple A is finally approved for its access.
So, then, well, then if you don't want to do that.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, either it's both triple A, or don't have one triple A, because otherwise you're going to have something that you're not going to be able to use until you get the access control.
Then, if, if that is the case, then, Mr. Speaker, then is that, then just the removal, again, like you say, of the triple A process, but rather have it then approved by the AG. That then will definitely be the shorter route.
All right, so the double underlines will read, "Such guidelines shall be adopted pursuant."
Through the approval.
No, shall be adopted and approved by the Attorney General, and ensure that these internet services are appropriate for minors. Okay, "Such guidelines shall be approved by the Attorney General and ensure that these internet services are appropriate." All right, so we'll drop the word adopted and put approved.
Adopted pursuant to.
No, not adopted.
No, no.
Approved.
To delete, no.
Approved by the Attorney General.
You're right.
And ensure that these internet services are appropriate for minors.
Yes, I was just saying what to delete here.
Okay.
So such guidelines shall be approved.
On, on this amendment.
Okay.
Any other senator wish to be heard? On the, any objection? Senator Underwood? Underwood and then Blas.
Okay, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, my amendment is very quite simple. On line fourteen, page three of forty-three oh five, I want, I want to add, "All cash donations are subject to the rules and regulations governing non-appropriate funds."
On the amendment? Can you read it one more time?
"All cash donations are subject to the rules and regulations governing non-appropriate funds."
And that would be on page three, line eleven?
Line fourteen of page three.
Oh, line fourteen.
It's right after donations, period. "All cash donations are subject to the rules and regulations governing non-appropriate funds."
Okay. Anyone? No objections, so ordered, thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you very much.
And can you just make sure that we get that in writing as well to the clerks? Thank you. I have next, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there was some concern earlier in discussions on page three, I'll work backwards, on page three, with regards to the solicitation and the acceptance of some donations, and one of the questions that came up was the reporting requirements that were necessary. And so right now, as it reads, basically, it says, "The name of the donor, the date of donation, and a description of the donations with a value in excess of one hundred dollars shall be posted on the Mayor's Counsel's website." And there was a question with whether or not, okay, I can recognize and I can understand in as far as the, the donation of equipment and services in excess of one hundred dollars. But when it came to the monetary donations, I do have some, I, I would like to be able to, to put some processes in to ensure that these are recorded properly, so I am proffering, going to proffer an amendment. I do have it actually written, and then I'll, I'll ask the clerk to, or, to be able to get it photocopied. It would provide, it would read, basically, starting on line fifteen, after, in, with a value in excess of one hundred dollars, it would read, "For equipment and services," comma, "and for any amount in monetary donations." So that the, the value in excess of one hundred dollars is just for the equipment and for the services that are, that were donated, but then for any amount of monetary donations that were, that were provided, that would have to be reported.
Is everyone, is everyone able to follow along? That after one hundred dollars for every amount of services and, and, I mean, every amount of services and any amount of monetary donation? Okay, and do we need to, most important, I want to make sure the clerk has that and that you please provide it.
I have it.
Okay, thank you. So, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment, the Blas amendment? Anyone object to the amendment? None, so, so ordered, thank you very much. Senator, you still have the floor, if you have another amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, now going to page two, actually, section four zero three zero two, broadband access at community facilities. And I, I appreciate and I understand, you know, you got to read the whole, the whole section in its entirety, but because, but then there, I, I do see, there may be some cause for, or there may be some concern for confusion, or for an ambiguous interpretation as to, you know, when the funds can be utilized, because if you read, it says, "Each mayor office is authorized to expend funds under its control, subject to regulations set forth in Title V, Chapter V, GCA, for the purchase of equipment necessary to provide free wireless internet services at any of their respective community facilities." Then it goes on to read, "Each mayor office is authorized to expend funds under its control for the purchase of wireless internet services from one of the more, one or more internet providers." So it appears that we're breaking this up, and that in one area, we're providing it, that the, "Subject to the regulations set forth," it could be read this way, "That subject to the regulations set forth in Title V, Chapter V, you can purchase equipment necessary for the services." But then, we go on to say, each, that the office is authorized to expend funds under its control for the purchase of wireless services. I don't think that necessarily, that wasn't necessarily the case, or it shouldn't be interpreted that way. You know, we want to be, make sure that the funds that is under its control, subject to the regulations set forth, is for the purchase of the equipment and the services necessary to provide the internet access. So my prob, what I like to proffer is that, on line nine, okay, page two, after the word "equipment," it, you put, "and services," so it says, "Of equipment and services," okay, "necessary to provide wireless, free wireless internet," and change out "services to access." And... So that way, it's clear that the funds that they have there under the control, subject to these regulations, can only be utilized for the purchase of equipment and services necessary to provide internet access. Because that's what we're doing, we're, we're giving them the ability to access the internet. Correspondingly, if that was to pass, then I would move that we strike, starting on line ten, where it says, "Each mayor office is authorized to expend funds," all the way to line thirteen, strike out that whole sentence. Because it would be covered in joining the services and the equipment in the first sentence.
We're going to do the first one. On line nine, after the word "equipment," add the words "and services," "necessary to provide free wireless internet," and delete "services to access."
Yes, ma'am.
Does everyone have that? Does anyone have, would anyone like to speak on those two amendments? Any objections? So ordered, none. And then the Second Amendment then, is that on line eleven, after the word "funds," so that will read, "Each mayoral office is authorized to expend funds," period?
Actually, sorry, line ten, ma'am. Each mayoral office is authorized.
Oh, so take, okay, so take out that last sentence, each, on lines, line ten, with each mayoral office, to delete all the way to the end of line thirteen, the word "facilities." Anyone, would anyone like to speak on the amendment? There being none, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Now, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate and I understand, we want to provide services, and we want to provide, basically, at no cost to the consumer. I have a little bit concerned with the word "free." You know, because as we were discussing earlier, there are a number of different parameters that we have to allow an individual to be able to access the internet services. So if you take in all the parameters, and take in all the things that we've brought, it's not necessarily free. So without, without, basically disintegrating the intent and the purpose of the, of the legislation, and wanting to be able to provide, you know, internet services where people won't be able to pay for it, eventually, there is a cost to this. And I'm just a little bit concerned with the word, with, with, just utilizing the word "free." Now, as minuscule as it does sound, it just, you know, for lack of a better term, I just don't want this to come back and bite us later on. So I just bring that as a point, raises a point of concern, I don't necessarily want to, you know, again, I don't want to lose the intent of the legislation. It's a great, great piece of legislation, I thank, you know, I applaud the author and the committee chair, and being able to work together on this thing, to, to come up with this. It's just I got to be very careful, and I, I'm just very cautious with regards to the utilization of the word "free." Because there are parameters, there are, there are, you know, go to a café, you know, internet access is free, provided you buy coffee. So I just got to be very careful with this. I just bring this up as a point, raises a point of concern for me, doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to object to this, it's just that, I just have an issue, I just have to bring that up, put it on the, put it on the record, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. We've exhausted the list. Is there anybody else who have not spoken on the main motion that would like to speak? Senator Munia Barnes?
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just real briefly, I stand in support of Bill sixty-four dash thirty-three COR, and I'd like to thank the good author for me, Mada, for giving me the author, giving me the opportunity to support this effort, and work closely with him as the Oversight Chair of Municipal Affairs, and really trying to provide the mayors the opportunity and the access to internet services for our community or for our village residents. I say that is because as we continue to move on with modern technology and the smart, smart technology, as they call it today, in a couple of months, by the time we get this all done and dealt with, there'll probably be a newer, faster, better system that may make this obsolete, and, and though I understand the good concern of my brother regarding the word "free," because really, nothing comes for free nowadays, there's, there's always at a price. Now, the, the utilization may be free, but the setup and, and what's needed to get it maintained, it must be purchased by somebody, and of course, that's kind of come from the mayor's office, but I can understand, maybe what we could do is find a better word, maybe allowable, or, or just delete that word "free," and, and just say, "To provide wireless internet," but I don't want to give the opportunity for anybody to come and charge and charge big, because the intent was, once we get this program in place, that, that, that the access for our village residents and our children who utilize the village mayor's offices and centers, that they be allowed to use that. And, and there are a lot of kids in our villages who don't have that access to home internet, and they don't have that luxury, and that's why this was a place. I want to share with you that we have a program that you and I supported, Madam Speaker, and that's working closely with the Guam Community College that had, that some of the villages had received a grant regarding the, the, was it smart key, turnkey for the students who access their level of competency and training, and, and work closely with the Guam Community College, and after getting, I mean, assessed on what their expertise on the different disciplines that they have in a program, that, that they're usually placed in a good job after certification, and that service was for free, but the setup to go into the program, to get that program into the mayor's office, and to get those free computers, had to, there had to be some preparation put into that. So I guess, because I bring that up, not all the villages have that, have that program in their, in their community, and I just want to say that this opportunity will, this opportunity of bringing wireless internet and free access to our village residents will open up a lot of other opportunities. So I, I guess for me, that's where the main intent was, and making sure that every child who does not have home access may be given that opportunity to work closely with their village mayors and the village staff within the village mayor's offices to, to have that opportunity to access internet capabilities. But I want to say for the record, I do stand. But I want to say for the record, I do stand in support of this measure, and I want to thank the good author from Yemattic for giving me the opportunity to work closely with us and the mayors, to have this program in each of the villages. Because it was, it was given, but because of the glitches, that a lot of the villages were not afforded that opportunity, and this is one way of doing that. So, thank you. I'm not going to make an amendment, because I think for me, though I do understand the concern of my good brother, I do know that that word "free Internet" has to be, it has to be left in this paragraph to assure that the accessibility will be afforded without any of our children or those who want to access, would not have to pay for it. So, thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anybody else? So on the motion then to send 64-33 to the third reading file, Senator, you want to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank my colleagues, Madam Speaker, for the great contributions they've made to Bill 64, and definitely making it a better bill. I also want to state, Madam Speaker, that the vision behind this was, I think many of us all tried to figure out ways to provide opportunities within our village communities, and see what can entice our children to engage in more, more positive activities. And I go back, Madam Speaker, to youth center time, youth center days, when I think I was the last generation of the youth center programs, and they were at every village and community center. And what enticed me then was a pool table. And that pool table led me to looking at a billboard and saying, what opportunities were there? And of course, I saw there was practice for baseball, and that's where I got my hand on baseball, and the rest is history. But our goal is to try to entice our children, especially after school, they're mostly involved in an education setting, and at a school, in a safe environment. But we don't know what happens from three to nine, or three to 10 after. I just hope that with Bill 64, we will create an opportunity, a program, that would, would bring youth and families to congregate at a safe environment, and hopefully lead to, and expand to more other programs or opportunities from that area. So with that, Madam Speaker, I, if there's no objection with my colleagues, Madam Speaker, I wish to, I wish to add all my colleagues as co-sponsors of Bill 64.
So Senator Morrison, besides the sponsors that are already listed, then all the rest of the sponsors, all the rest of our colleagues will be put on after that that are not already put on?
Yes, ma'am.
Alphabetically.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Right now, next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is Bill Number 9-33COR with Senator Rodriguez. Senator, is the committee reported? Okay. Senator Underwood, you're recognizing Bill Number 70-33COR?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that substitute bill, Number 70-33COR, which was substituted by the Committee on Appropriation and Adjudication, be placed under third reading file, and I ask to be able to speak on it.
And it's as substituted, right, Senator Underwood?
Yes, as substituted.
Are there any objections? No objections. Please proceed, Senator Underwood.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Substitute Bill 7033 has been filed by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, and I would like to thank the Chair of that Committee for working closely with me and my staff to ensure that this bill be heard during this May session. Substitute Bill 7033 with a revised title, an act to amend Section 41105 of Chapter 41, Article 1 of Title 17 of the Guam Code annotated, and to add and use Section 72109 of Chapter 71, Title 10 of the Guam Code annotated, relative to the creation of an emergency registry for individuals with special needs, reflects the discussions that were raised during the public hearing that was held in April 15th, 2015, and the roundtable meeting held and conducted by myself on May 7th, 2015. The changes are as follows. The substitute bill 7033, it expands affected population to any individual with special need, not just individuals with disabilities, as commonly understood. This bill also changes administering agency from DISIT to the Guam Fire Department. It also authorizes the Guam Fire Department to enter into an MOU with DISIT, so that may consult and advise on GFD's creation of the registry. The substitute bill also appropriates the sum of up to $150,000 from the unappropriated fund balance of the Enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System Fund to the Guam Fire Department for the sole purpose of creating and implementing and maintaining the emergency registry for individuals with special needs. The bill also allows GFD to participate in a national online registry, which meets the requirements of Bill 70. So just to give you a little bit of background, the creation of this bill, Bill 70, actually had started from parents of children with autism. They had requested a registry be established to assist individuals with disabilities at times of an emergency. Specifically, we have young adults who may be out for a social function, and if there is some kind of altercation, and they may just be standing around, and they're approached by the first responders. If they don't communicate appropriately, they may actually not understand why they're not communicating with them. It could turn out to be something volatile, they would be misunderstood. So by having the registry, whenever there is an emergency, the first responders would have access, once they get the identification of the individual, and they scan it, they would have access to the particular information that they would need to approach or to provide emergency services to individuals with disabilities, or those who have special medical needs. So this actually will not only protect our young and adult population with disabilities, but it also protects those with specific medical needs, and would assist our first responders on how to address those needs, those needs. So some of the initial concerns that were raised with Bill 7033, when it was first introduced, was that they were concerned about the confidentiality, because we're going to have information specific to the medical condition of individuals or their disability. They were also concerned about the training of the first responder, so that it would be adequate, and that this was somehow a government-run registry, and there was just concerns about the extent to which we would be able to protect the information. I also discovered through this that there were many different registries that were going on in different agencies. So what we're trying to do is consolidate the registries specific to meeting the needs of our special population. I believe that the substitute bill 7033 has addressed the concerns about confidentiality, has also addressed concerns about expanding this, so that it's not for, just for individuals with disabilities, but those who also have special medical needs. And there were also concerns initially, especially from the committee, that we were trying to appropriate funds, and we didn't really have a funding source. So the substitute bill had identified that E911. And so I really would like to encourage my dear colleagues to support this bill, and to support our effort to send it to the third reading file. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Underwood. Anyone else wishing to speak? I have Senator Mike Siniklas. Anyone else wanting to speak? Senator Frank Vloss. Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I wanted to thank the author for introducing this bill. I have a son who has autism, and one of the things about Caleb is, you know, we can all be in the House, and I'll call out to him, and he won't ever respond. And one of the things that I've read about when further researching the condition that my son has, is that in the event of a fire, that can be a very, very, you know, a very sad thing. Because a fireman can be running through the, through the unit, or the parents can be trying to get everybody out of the house, and if a first responder doesn't know that there may be someone with special needs who does not respond when being called, they might not, you know, take the extra effort to clear every single room, because they might think that they've called out and no one responded. So this is, this piece of legislation may in fact save lives, and I really commend the author for introducing it. I do have a number of amendments that I'd like to proffer to try and help tighten up its objective. The first, Madam Speaker, is, when I read the bill, and I guess I can pose this as a question to the author in case she may help me to see it, but I see the section here where DISIT will consult with the fire department. I see the part here where it spells out the information being confidential, and it spells out the creation of the actual registry. But I don't see anything here that actually says or mandates when the registry is to be used. And so I wanted to add language on page four, line two, and subsection begins on page three, "The Guam Fire Department shall create a registry entitled 'The Emergency Registry for Individuals of Special Needs,' herein referred to as the registry." And then after that, adding a new sentence.
Hold on. Page four?
Page four, line two.
Line two.
Adding a new sentence after the word "registry,"
Uh-huh.
That reads, and I guess I can ask the body for guidance, but that reads, "Such registry shall be referred to by all emergency responders when responding to an emergency, or when responding to an emergency call." When responding to an emergency call. Such registry shall be, shall be referred to by all emergency responders when responding to an emergency call. That way, we're mandating that they have to look at this registry and actually use it when they're being called to any kind of emergency. So for example, if they're being called to, you know, 111 Gloria Circle, Derrido, they'll pull up the registry for 111 Gloria Circle, and they'll refer to it and see if anybody there might have any special needs.
Just for the clerk's sake, Senator Siniklas, can you just read that one more time so that we get it correct?
A brief recess, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just got some guidance from the Majority Leader, so the language will read for the benefit of the clerk. "Such registry shall be referred to by all emergency responders in the course of carrying
Responders, right?
"Such registry shall be referred to by all emergency responders in the course of carrying out their duties."
On that amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Senator Torres, you're recognized.
I would like to get some clarification from the proffer of that amendment. There are two concerns that I have specific to that amendment. One, good author, you now propose that they mandate that they be referring to this registry. My question is, is this registry, an online registry that is easily accessible, or instantly accessible, or is it a paper registry that they have to somehow refer to? And secondly, what are the consequences if an emergency personnel, in the event of an emergency, has to use their best discretion and judgment in the moment of the act? What if that person doesn't refer to the registry? What is the liability to the government if they don't refer to the registry? And, you know, it just, it just opens up, I believe, a whole can of worms when you have emergency responders, and the nature of emergency response, and sometimes you don't have the access of researching something adequately to make judgment, because judgment oftentimes in emergency situations is instant.
Senator Siniklas, would you like to answer those two questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, first, the author is indicating to me that the registry will be available online. So I will answer the first concern. As to the second concern, Madam Speaker, you know, there are so many requirements that come with being an emergency responder. There are so many rules and regulations that you have to follow in being an emergency responder. And the reality is that if you fail to follow any one of them, you may open up yourself to any form of liability. We always hope that we're never going to be saddling our emergency responders with undue lawsuits and litigation. But that doesn't mean either that we need to reduce the mandates that they have to follow, whether it's a mandate to keep their equipment at a certain level of repair, or a mandate to have so many training hours under their belt in order to maintain their certifications, or a mandate to properly secure their weapon, or a mandate to, you know, respond in a certain fashion. And what this bill will do, with this particular amendment, is it will include in the response mandate of our emergency responders, the requirement that they refer to this registry. I mean, the whole purpose, Madam Speaker, of us creating this registry is for it to be actually used. And if it's so important for us to mandate its creation, if it's so important for us to authorize the expenditure of funds in order to pay for whatever is needed to get this registry created, then surely we should include it as a standard mandate and an operating mandate of all of our emergency responders to refer to this when responding to any emergency. Now, does this mean that we're going to be exposing a responder to a certain type of risk, because they're responding under a level of pressure, given the circumstances? I think that in the end, if it does have to be litigated or adjudicated, we can rely on the wisdom of the community with respect to that outcome. But I don't think that we should not make this be something that our responders should refer to, because we're worried about potential litigation. I think that it's, if we're going to create it, if we're going to fund it, then let's require it to be something that's going to be used in the process of responding to these emergencies. Now, when we had the participation of the fire department in the hearing, it was always my assumption that they have every intention of using this registry. I don't think that the intent is to create the registry and not use it. And so if the intent is to use it, then I would feel comfortable in mandating that it be used. That way, we know that not only was the expectation there from the first responder for them to use it, but the mandate was actually there from the government, that we did create this, and we do want it to be used. So may it open up additional liabilities? It may. But no more liabilities than every other standard requirement that all of our emergency responders have to meet. And so this basically is us saying, we have a new requirement. It is for you to refer to this registry that we are creating with this bill, and that we are funding with this bill. And I think that our first responders can handle it. I don't, I don't have any reason to believe they can't. So that's my response, Madam Speaker, to the two questions.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. I think my brother Frank has a point of inquiry, or?
I have actually a point of information. I feel almost compelled to be able to have to stand here and provide this. Please, I think that, I look around the room... Please, I think that, I look around the room, I'm probably the only one that has the experience in as far as first responding, okay? From the law enforcement side as well as the Homeland Security side. This bill actually, and I don't see anywhere here it says Guam Police Department. And if we're going to compel this, a lot of times, the first responder, the actual individual that's going to get there, is going to be the police officer. And trust me, Madam Speaker, when you're flying to a scene, okay, and many other things are occurring, all of these thought processes have to go through your mind and everything. Sometimes you don't have enough time to be able to check in the registry. You're going to have to go with what you see, what's in front of you. And so I don't want to take anything away from the, I think it's a great bill. I think that it can serve our purpose. I'm just concerned here that what we're going to probably do here is put together something as well-intentioned as it is, is going to be impossible to implement. And so, you know, trust me, Madam Speaker, this has been a conversation, this has been, this has been an exercise, has been an attempt to be able to provide this, to do this, to provide this registry for emergency management, for emergency responders, for first responders, for many years, since I was the Homeland Security Advisor. And I'm glad and I appreciate that there are a number of, you know, discussions with regards to the confidentiality requirements and whatnot, and I can see here that too, a lot of the information here is going to, is provided voluntarily. But however, there are things, there are processes and there are things that occur in the response to an emergency situation, okay, that you're going to have to go with your best judgment of what you see. I can tell you of a time, Madam Speaker, where I spent close to a half an hour trying to talk somebody down out of, to put down a weapon. Only a half an hour later, find out that everything that I was yelling and shouting and screaming to the person, person can't hear me. At the end of the day, though, we got what was right, what was best for that person. Was that person hurt? No. Was anybody harmed? But when I pulled up to the scene, the only thing that I saw there was a person with a weapon. Okay, so I don't want to take away, and please, please understand, I don't want to take anything away from the intent. I appreciate it. It's just that if we truly, truly, truly want this to work, there are other, there are other entities here that are missing, that are necessary, and they have, they need to be recognized, okay, that they have to be, even in this, even in the amendment that's being proffered. When you say the emergency management, I think that it's incumbent that we have, you recognize and you know what the police department's capability is, okay, and whether or not this can actually work and how they can make it work. Thank you.
Senator, we're going to do a recess with the questions that you have, and I also understand that there's a, an inquiry from Senator Torres that hasn't been responded to, so.
Yes, this is a point of information.
Okay. Sure.
This is to address a concern, and I do have an appreciation for that, to the previous speaker. We actually had the Guam Police Department participate in the public hearing, which we had presented this, and they had articulated this, noted in the committee, the committee report, that they were supportive of that, of this registry. So, Madam Speaker, we did include not only the Guam Fire Department and DISIT, but also the Guam Police Department, and they did participate in the public hearing. And articulated their support before that was...
Sorry. So, okay, with that information, then, we're going to go and take a brief recess and see where we're going with this.
Senators, we left off, at the time at least, procedurally, when Senator Nicholas proffered an amendment, and then Senator Torres had asked a question on the amendment, and so now the question to Senator Torres is that if Senator Nicholas had satisfactorily answered your question, and it's yes or no, you still have the floor then to be able to express that. So, Senator, yes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, to my question, my concern primarily was on access to the information for emergency responders, who we understand are usually in a life and death situation, and they have to act, make judgments at the drop of a hat. So, to the question, is there online access? Will this information and registry be available online? He said that, the previous speaker said that the author indicated so, but I don't see any, any provision for it in the bill. And number two, the question was, what is the liability then, and the exposure to the law enforcement officer or responder if they do not refer to the list as the proposed amendment would say? And I don't think that that was adequately addressed either. So, I would object to his amendment.
Okay, thank you, Senator. So, on the amendment, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this Nicholas amendment? Senator Esmo Don?
No, not so much that I'd like to speak to it, Madam Speaker, because so much time has passed, and the amendment was not written down and passed out. Could you just reiterate what the amendment was?
Okay, my understanding, Senator, then, is on page four, after line, on line two, after the word "registry," that such registry shall be referred to by all emergency responder in the course of carrying out their duties. Is that correct, Senator? Okay. Such registry shall be referred to by all emergency responders in the course of carrying out their duties. I see some puzzled faces, so... Okay, so, Senator, do you have it in writing, so we can have it copied? Okay, they're printing it. So, would, it would help if the Senator would continue to speak on the amendment too, then therefore reiterating, you know, the amendment, or explaining the amendment? Copies are being made. Such registry shall be referred to by all emergency responders in the course of carrying out their duties. I still see confused faces. So, Senator Nicholas, can you please maybe continue? We would allow for you, again, to be able to explain what you, you know, your intentions are with this particular amendment.
So, Madam Speaker, asking me to once again reiterate the need for this amendment?
Yes.
Okay. We are entertaining Bill 70-33, and the intent of this bill is to create this registry for individuals with special needs, to be able to register their special need with emergency response teams, so that when they do respond, they'll be able to factor in that special need in their response. So, for example, as I stated earlier, my son has autism. If I register my son on this registry, then everyone who responds to my address, for example, or who responds to an emergency, and my son's name is mentioned, it will pop up into the system, and they'll be able to know that if you're responding to Caleb Michael Nicholas at 111 Gloria Circle, this individual has autism. Now, we're creating this registry in this piece of legislation. We have provisions in here to fund this registry of $150,000, and the purpose of this amendment is, if we're going to create the registry and pay for the registry, shouldn't we actually make sure the registry is being used by the first responders? Why are we going to create a registry and pay for its creation, but not include in the language of the legislation the requirement that the emergency responders will refer to it in the course of their duties? That's exactly what this amendment seeks to do, Madam Speaker. It reads, "Such registry shall be referred to by all emergency responders in the course of carrying out their duties." Now, if we're going to create the registry, and if we're going to pay for its creation, then we certainly should include in the language of the legislation the requirement that they use this registry. Otherwise, Madam Speaker, if we're not going to pass this amendment, then what's the purpose of this registry? We're going to create a list, we're going to have people voluntarily submit their information, we're going to spend $150,000 to do all this work, and no one's going to have to use the registry? I mean, we're basically spending and creating a list for nothing. And, what's even worse, if we want to talk about liability, is we're now creating the false impression on everybody who's signing up for this registry, that their information is actually going to be factored in by emergency responders. So perhaps, we're not just having emergency responders liable, but everyone in this room is going to be liable, because we're now having people of special needs registering for something, thinking that that registration is going to provide them with some kind of accommodation, only to have it not provided at all. So, if we're going to be misleading people by creating the registry, then we shouldn't be entertaining the bill at all. But if it is important, and I believe it's important, then we need to make sure that it goes full circle, and is actually being utilized by the emergency responders for whom this registry is being created. It's being created so that the people who have the special need, and the people who are responding to the emergency, can understand what that need might be, when they get there, before they get there. Now, I have more, I have more items that I may want to close on with respect to the amendment, Madam Speaker, but that's just my clarification on why I'm introducing this particular amendment.
Thank you, Senator. So, on this Nicholas amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on it? Senator Esmo Don, now having heard the explanation, and you have a written copy of the amendment. Are you okay?
Madam Speaker, yes. I appreciate the explanation for this particular amendment, and it, I think it was well said, definitely. The, I think the issues that we may have to face, confront, would be not so much on this amendment, but in the bill as a whole. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, so, you're not objecting to the amendment. Is there anybody else on the amendment? Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This to Senator, on the author of that amendment. There was a concern that, had been raised by my colleague, that in an emergency situation, the first responders have to react right way, and they just have to be required to do research while they are in the process of responding to an emergency situation. But I suppose the idea that, as the calls are made for regarding...
As the calls are made regarding the emergency situation, that it would actually, while, while the responders are being dispatched, whoever is receiving that, that call, after they dispatch, the responders could actually have access to the online information, so they can provide them with additional information. So, it's not necessarily the first responder who is on their way to the situation who'll be doing the research, but it could very well be who, the dispatcher, somebody who is receiving the call. Thank you.
A point of order, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate. Just to clarify, it's not that they don't want, I tell you what, you appreciate any information, and all information that you can get, you can get, okay, in the course of response. It's a point of information, I, point of inquiry.
Wait, I just want to make sure that when you're going to call point of order, is that you're actually citing something in the standing rules, maybe, that's out of order, that I need to know?
Well, I think it's because it was a response to some of my concern, Madam Speaker. Point of information.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, point of order is a little bit different, okay.
And I'm providing a point of information based on my experience.
Because normally, you want me to correct something.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, you appreciate all the information you can provide. It's, my concern was, sometimes you don't have enough time to be able to slow your response down to get all the information. Okay? That's, that's the point of information that I was bringing.
Okay. Now, you do know, by the ways, that when, you can always just rise to speak to an amendment, and, and then reserve your right to speak on the main motion for much later, and you still have a second opportunity.
Oh, yeah, don't worry.
Okay. But, just, yeah. I just don't want us to keep using the point of information, point of inquiry, and we're getting a lot of extra time to, to speak, when I would give you the time. I'm very liberal about giving you more time. I'm just saying. Okay, so, I know we do have an objection, and, but is there anybody else, again, who would like the opportunity to speak? All right, then, so I would allow then, the mover of the amendment then to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I'd like to ask the body to consider the amendment for what it is, separate from the bill as a whole, and consider the need for us to understand that perhaps the amendment is necessary, even if you don't support the bill. Because if we don't have this amendment in here, and the bill does so happen to pass by eight votes, then we're going to have a bill that creates a registry and spends money, but doesn't require that registry to be put to use. And I think that it's very important for us to consider the need for us to put this registry to use. Because while we've heard the perspective of somebody who was, in fact, a first responder, and an emergency responder, I can offer you the clear perspective of someone who has an individual with special needs. And that clear perspective is this, Madam Speaker. If we're going to create this registry, which I think is not only a great idea, but something that's necessary in our community, we need to make sure the registry is being used. As a parent of a child with special needs, there could be a variety of circumstances by which my son would need to have his condition known by the first responders before they get there. Unfortunately, in these current, in this current environment, there's absolutely no way for them to know, unless the person who's on the phone, talking to the first responders, is actually telling them the circumstances. But if there was a fire at my son's school, and someone called in and said, "There's a fire at this school," no one would know that there are, there is at least one student in that school who has autism. And maybe everybody would think that, okay, everybody knows the fire drills, and all the kids know where they're supposed to go, and we went around, and we called out for everybody, and they all responded. But if we don't know, then we won't be able to accommodate. And one of the things that factors into my thought process in all this, Madam Speaker, is, you know, right now, my son, he's a minor under my care, and he has a parent to take care of him, but one day his parent will be gone, and there are many other individuals out there in this community who, who don't even have individuals to take care of them. They don't have somebody to look out for them. And in the event that there was an emergency, they could benefit greatly by people who are responding, being able to take into consideration their circumstances before they even get there. Madam Speaker, we're not talking about some kind of rocket science initiative here. Okay? This amendment says that the registry will be referred to by all emergency responders in the course of carrying out their duties. Now, that could be something as simple as dispatch saying, "Just be aware, when you get to 111 Gloria Circle, there is an individual there of autism." I mean, how can that be a bad thing? How can we not want that information to be in the hands of our first responders? Anything, anything to make our first responders able to do their job better in that situation is something that we should welcome. Now, granted, you know, in this litigious society that is the United States of America, ruled by law, where attorneys make so much money taking things to court, yes, you know, sure, we may be opening up things for liability. But does that mean then that we should skirt the ultimate responsibility? For fear of somebody getting sued because they may not have looked at a registry, we're not going to create a registry? Or for fear of somebody sued that they did not look at the registry the way they're supposed to, we're not going to require that they do? So, we're willing to put all those people at risk, all those people at risk, who may have been better served by this, because we're afraid that somebody might go to court? And then let's step back and evaluate the actual problem. If you didn't look at the registry, and you go to court, and you're found guilty of not having looked at it when you're supposed to, how is that a bad thing? If you were supposed to look at a registry that said, "This person has post-traumatic stress disorder from being in the war in Afghanistan," and they may respond violently if you don't declare yourself a certain way, and you fail to look at that registry, and you end up shooting the person, that's something for our courts to adjudicate. But that's definitely not something that we should just wipe out entirely and say, "No, no, never mind, let's not have that information out there at all." That's a classic example, Madam Speaker, of exactly why something like this is necessary. Because in this community, there are many people with special needs. We're not just talking about the son of a senator with a disability, we're talking about veterans. We're talking about people who have nobody. We may be talking about people who don't even speak English, and who could benefit from being on this registry, because they may not be able to tell you, when you get there, that they cannot take this certain medication. This will save lives, Madam Speaker. So, I think it's absolutely necessary for us to not only pass this amendment, but do the work necessary to refine this bill to a point where it will be a service to our community, because it's a service our community needs. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Since there is an objection, we're going to have to call for the vote. In favor, then, of this Nicholas amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, the amendment carries. On the list to speak, and this is on the main, oh, you still have another one? Okay, so, sorry. Okay, Senator. No, he says, he has another amendment. Yes, it passed, without your vote. We'll record your vote now. Okay, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Another question I had for the author is on page four, line 18. We state that the registry will be created, and we state the provisions upon which will be included there. But then it says in the last sentence there, "The registry application form may be available at the office of the Guam Fire Department." And my question to the author is, where will the actual, I mean, if we're going to create this, and we're going to allow people to apply for it, there has to be a place for them to be able to reliably go and apply. So, if it may be available at GFD, where will it actually be always available for them to apply for?
Senator D. U. to the question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The, the application may be available at the office of the Guam Fire Department, but we, the Guam Fire Department would actually be in a memorandum, would enter into a memorandum of understanding with DISIT, so it will be made available through DISIT. It would actually be DISIT that will be facilitating and assisting the fire department in creating the registry, so that the information is gathered from the individuals with special needs. So, that's part of what's actually in the bill.
Senators Nicholas, did she adequately then answer your question?
For the moment, Madam Speaker, I'm just asking the author to just validate for me the exact location of that section, otherwise I'll need to make the necessary amendment. the exact location of that section, otherwise I'll need to make the necessary amendment. So I'll go ahead and stand down on that for now and move on to my next amendment, pending her feedback.
Okay, so, but you're not doing, you're not making an amendment here?
No, I will go ahead and make an amendment, Madam Speaker, on this issue. After the word "form" on page four, line eighteen, add the language "shall be available at DISIT and..." So the registry application form shall be available at DISIT and may be available at the office of the Guam Fire Department.
Okay, so, shall be available at DISIT and may be available at the office of the Guam Fire Department.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
So one is shall, and the other one is may?
Yes.
Okay. On the amendment, Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, with the amendment that's been made here, and as you go through the bill, it really kind of is not clear who has ownership of this program. Is it DISIT? Is it GFD? And it's not clear. In fact, we talk about entering into memorandum of agreement with DISIT. We talk about GFD has got to do certain things. On page four, line twenty-one, it talks about, "Once the registration has been received and processed, the Guam Fire Department or its designated agent shall officially respond by mail." So it's not quite clear who has ownership of this. And maybe if, and so, you know, I think in answering with this amendment here, I want to have a clear idea of who has the ownership.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I yield to the question. On page three, at the bottom of page, line twenty-seven, says, "The Guam Fire Department shall create a registry entitled the Emergency Registry for Individuals with Special Needs referred to as a registry." So it's clearly, Madam Speaker, clearly, it's the Guam Fire Department, and the DISIT is there to provide support and consultation and assistance, because it's DISIT that has actually access to individuals with disabilities, but, you know, so it's, I'm thinking that this is, line twenty-seven makes that clear.
Senator Ada?
Well, it's still not clear, because while it's true that on page three, in line twenty-seven, it says, "Guam Fire Department shall create a registry," and just by the author of the bill said, "Therefore, Guam Fire Department has ownership of this program." And then further elaborated that since DISIT has this information, I don't know, I got confused after that. Then, and then further, there's a reference made here that the, there's on page two, that DISIT will, is authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with GFD to act as a consultant and advisor in the establishment and maintenance of the emergency registry. So I'm really kind of still confused as to who has ownership of this program.
We're going to take a brief recess. The legislature's back in session. Apparently, there are still a lot of questions. We are going to recess until tomorrow morning at nine a.m. So please work, continue to work, and then at nine a.m., hopefully, absolutely. Thank you very much for respecting your aunt. So recess until tomorrow morning.